Welcome members. Welcome members. Welcome to the Annual Meeting of the County Council taking place on Wednesday, the twenty fifth of May, twenty twenty two. This meeting is being broadcast live through our YouTube channel. Before we commence with today's formal business, can I ask everyone in the chair to switch off from mid-style and air mobile phones please? Colleagues, as you all know, it is my subject to formally report the death of former councillor and recently made honourable honourable woman Geraldine Briggdale. Geraldine was elected to the County Council in two thousand and two days, where she served the same electoral division till May twenty twenty one. Geraldine was a former senior member for Aislingford District Council between nineteen ninety five and two thousand and nine. Can I ask the council to stand with me for a moment's silence please? Welcome members. You will note that there is still a one-way system in operation in the council chamber. Therefore, if you need to leave the chamber at any point, please do so following the one-way system as you leave the three-way exit room. Face masks and social distancing are no longer mandatory. However, I would ask you to consider wearing your face mask if you need to move around the chamber. The windows may be opened periodically to provide ventilation if required. As in all of the previous council meetings, any request to speak must be made using your voting handset. If you in the camp have any problems with your voting handset, please raise your handset in the air and a member of the committee services group here will come to assist. In these circumstances, I would be grateful as members could be fully considerate towards those members of staff approaching along the roads of city wearing their face mask if possible. Once invited to speak, please stand up and face forward and switch on the closest microphone to you. I would also like to welcome to the meeting members of the public. You are very welcome to attend in order proceedings. However, I request politely that you do not disturb the meeting. Before we move on to the election of the chair, can I also remind the council that speeches can be made on nominations of the chair of the council only, and other nominations will be moved and seconded without speeches. So all members coming who want to item one, which is the election of chair. Can I have nominations for the office of chair of the council please?
Chair, council, it is customary practice that unless interrupted by an election, the vice-chairman of council steps up to become chairman, having served a year's apprenticeship as it were. I am therefore delighted to propose councillor Beattie Bainbridge, the one conservative councillor from Chesterley Street, as chairman for the council year twenty-two, twenty-three. Beattie has been on the council since it turned unitary in two thousand and nine with one break. She has been active in the community for many years before that. I had heard of Beattie Bainbridge up in Chesterley Street a long time before I actually met her. Grounded in community work, possessing bags of common sense and unafraid to speak her mind, and with a lot of life experience to draw on, I am confident that Beattie will be an excellent ambassador for our council outside of this chamber and an excellent meeting chair within it. Therefore, on behalf of the joint administration, I propose councillor Beattie Bainbridge as chairman for the next council year. Thank you Chair.
Could I have seconded please?
Thank you Chair, councillor Paul Sexton, Chesterley Street South. I've known Beattie for many years, prior to becoming the councillor and indeed before she was a councillor. She's also affectionately known as Auntie Beattie to us Chesterley Street councillors. As Richard said, she's a community champion, she all her endeavours are for the community. And she's a social butterfly, she likes to mix with people and she's perfect for this role. She also likes to be chauffeured around, as Alan would testify, so to have an additional driver, which is successful in the chairmanship, would be like getting a new pair of shoes for it. So I formally second Beattie Bainbridge. Thank you.
Thank you Chair, for your tendency, willing to put it this way. It gives a great pleasure to rise and propose councillor Oldham Young as chairman of Durham County Council. I've known Oldham for over a decade and most of that time we've spent together as members of the Wellington group. I think Oldham is what you best describe as a class act, I've got to know that at the time of Oldham. She's somebody you turn to for wisdom, I think many people agree here that wisdom is according to its often in short supply these days. Like many of us, Oldham was one of the swan, just down the road. And before entering this this government, she started her career in teaching, she taught across County Durham and became a head teacher at Heselen Primary School. I think it's fair to say about Oldham as well, that she's been selfless for the gender. Teaching took her into active work with the NASUWT Teaching Trade Union and she rose to be president of the NASUWT, representing thousands of teachers across England and beyond. I think as well, when we look at Oldham, we think back on the work that she has done on this council. She had a four-year for children and people services between twenty seventeen and twenty twenty-one. And central to that was improving and building new schools across County Durham. Indeed, we saw one open this week at Holborn, I'm sure many of you were there to see that. And I think as well, just to recognise the work that she did this CYPS or four-year order, she was elected by her peers across the northeast region to chair their network. And this one is, Oldham is actually unique in place as she chaired this county council. And due to, I know she was focused on what is our greatest asset in County Durham. And it's our countryside, it's our coastline, it's our history sites is one of the three R. It's everything, our bridges are our bypasses. Our greatest asset in County Durham is our people and particularly our young people. Oldham has always focused on our young people and I'm sure she will do that in the role of this chair of this borough. Why? Because she always has. And she'll give a hundred to ten per cent. Why? Because she always has. So I would like to formally move my fellow ward councillor, my fellow county councillor, above all my friend, Nelson Oldham Young, as the chair of Durham County Council. Thank you Chair.
Could I have seconded please?
Thank you Chair, I've worked with Oldham for many years and like first, she's completely dedicated to the people of County Durham and to the afterlife and I'm on my second time in.
Do we have any more nominations? Okay, I'll pass now to Helen, who will explain the voting procedure.
Thank you Chair, good morning members. Since we have problems in nominations, we will go to vote using voting concepts. The names will be entered into the concept in the order in which they're nominated. So councillor Beattie Bainbridge, then first followed by councillor Oldham Young, then the three you wish to have stayed. Once the buzzer's gone and the votes open, select the candidate you wish to vote for. If you select the wrong candidate, selecting correct one will correct your vote. We'll let you know on the time of the vote.
Members. House of Bainbridge, sixty-five. House of Gunn, fifty-two. Three exceptions. House of Bainbridge, twenty. House of Bainbridge has elected as chair of County Council. Your honour, House of Bainbridge, what time do you join you?
I, Beattie Bainbridge, of Chesterley Street Division, having been elected to the office of chair of the County Council, declare that I take that upon myself and duly and faithfully fulfil the duties of it according to the best of my judgment and ability. I would like to say thank you for the nomination chaired by my fellow colleague. It gives me great pleasure to accept, also a privilege to be able to promote Durham County Council. Watts is a very hard actor, Paula, and I can assure you I will do it hundred per cent. This would be one of those experiences of a lifetime which will leave me with a better knowledge of people and places. During my second year, the door to my office would always be open to everyone, all would be treated with the greatest respect which I hope will be reciprocated. I will be forward to the challenges ahead and with your support, I will embrace all appointments and continue to promote Durham County Council. May I take this opportunity to announce the purpose of my house, the Great North Children's House that we founded there from, and the Haswell in District North Park. Thank you. Could I also make a tribute to Watts? Can I say thank you for it's been a privilege and a pleasure to promote Durham County Council to Watts Vice Chair. To follow, to follow Watts is a very large prayer we choose to fill. Watts has embraced his chairmanship over the past year with pride, respect and dignity. Meeting people and visitors from all walks of life, dignities and shaking hands with members of the Roy family, his experience of building his architecture, spiritual reminias of conversations he will tell for some time. Have you Watts? And without the group lead as the opportunity to speak at this point. Councillor Madge Hopgood?
Thank you. And if I can pass on, congratulations to Beattie on your appointment and wish you well in the next year. So a special thanks to Watts for his service as chair for what has been an unusual year. Having not had a year's lead in as vice-chair, you have had to learn on the job, so to say. And what a fantastic job you've done. That would be, that would not only be a challenge in normal times, but given that most of your year has been in unfamiliar circumstances with Covid, I think you've done an excellent job and I wish you well for the future and hope you get a well-deserved rest.
Councillor Richard Bell?
Thank you Chair. Well, it's been another chairman as you're affected by Covid. And I think it was only last August, Watts, that you actually went to any events. And I suspect only in the last few months that it's been anything like approaching normal. Watts has had a hard task inside this chamber with many new members of council and the standards of behaviour somewhat lower than we've been used to in previous councils. But Watts has coped with this with good humour and has steered us through some challenging meetings. Outside the chamber, Watts has been a great representative for the council, engaging positively with many community groups and individuals. He's served as a county councillor for more than twenty years and his knowledge of the council and the county has served him in good stead. Watts, I don't pretend to understand all the football references you make in discussions and meetings. And in the interest of an ordinary meeting here today, you'll have to explain to me privately why the team you support is the best. A view that does not seem to command front census. But I do understand and appreciate that the work you've done over the last year as chairman. So many thanks for that work and enjoy the coming council year. Thank you Watts.
Thank you Chair, congratulations Beattie. Councillor Stanley. Watts, I'd like to extend the thanks and appreciation from the members of the Durham group on your appointment as the first independent councillor, and I say that again, the first independent councillor, position of chair of Durham County Council. In the face of some trying and challenging issues, specifically in chairing all council meetings, you've tried to maintain a very diversified and robust control of protocol and meeting procedures. If there was ever a person who thrives on the tactile aspects of civic duty for this auspicious council position, it would serve you. Even though the first three months of your office was directly affected by the Covid restrictions, eighty-four events in eight months is still ongoing. Congratulations and well done. Lastly, on a private note, I offer my sincere thanks to you for your help and assistance during acting as my chauffeur during my period of incapacity from my accident earlier this year. But as you will now have more time on your hands as you step down from your role and duties as chair, you have no excuse not to get your car varted after having exercised your panda duties, taking the Gronkens to McDonald's. Thank you.
Councillor John Shuttler-Wen?
Thank you Chair, I've got to say to Watts, you have come into the ring with dignity and fairness and always have been as you've been to the basket, where it's a minister of one of the counties and we should well do it.
Councillor Colin Marshall?
Thanks Chair, good luck to you in the coming year, you'll have our group's full support. Watts, I just want to pass on our thanks on behalf of the Labour Group. Talk with experience, with the Watts's family, I know it's like to lose a parent and achieve being means Watts. Thanks for all the work you've put in to support the council in the role as chairman and well done.
Councillor Liz Madison?
Thank you Watts for your time as chair. I know it's a very difficult job to hold and it's very time-consuming as well. So I do appreciate everything that you've done and I wish you the best of luck, Beattie, in your appointment.
Councillor Karen Hawley?
Ladies and gentlemen, I'm the Chief Leader, Detective President, Councillor Stanley O'Carroll.
Well members, thank you for what you've just gathered and all the best to you as well. If I can be of any help, you know where I'm at. I'd like to thank all the group leaders for those remarks to your family as well. Lisa, Nicola, Alex, and Molly and Mark. It's been, like was said, then started off not particularly good with lockdown, the first ones. John came over to us and said at the end of August, we'll give you a free parade with a trampoline, worry. Caremoles will send them cards and flowers. And as Alan pointed out, concluding before council ten meetings, and did eighty-four meetings. People asked us which one was best, but all agreed from the treason, from the Platinum Jubilee, to go to schools across the county, yes, to go to civic charity dinners, yes, I'm measuring the waistline. Councillor Derryan, Kevin, you, you brought that to the party and said, to do that, and I did it after that. But it's been a complete and utter honour for me to be chairman of the council. And I appreciate that it's a full council meeting, it's the AGM, I could go literally on and on and on. I had prepared a four-page speech, but it would be far too long to tell you about some of the places that I've been to. I've never been to churches where I found dirt each, Christmas trees in, fantastic, Seirfield, brilliant. For those decorations in the church, I've never seen anything as glorious, really, those were absolutely fantastic. I can name all the counties, some schools, fantastic. Members, thank you for the year of modern, yes, I did feel a pro, and I won't be talking at once, but it's been a fantastic year, hasn't it? So thank you members, this is all that's happened.
Can I ask the council to place on record its appreciation of the services of councillor Watts Lenny during his evening as chair in the county council?
Agreed.
Can I have nominations for the office of vice-chair of the council please?
Thank you again Chair, on behalf of the joint administration, I propose for the position of vice-chair of all council, councillor John Nicholson.
Could I have a second please?
Thank you, congratulations on becoming chair. I'm delighted to second John Nicholson as the next vice-chair of Durham County Council.
Is there any other nominations please? Yes, councillor?
Councillor David Miller, on my honour to nominate, I will probably pass on this as my first vice.
Could I have a second please? Have you second councillor Hobbs and others? Okay members, it would be the same process, you will enter the names of the nominations, the nominees in your own which you will receive. So councillor John Nicholson, number one, and councillor Lucy Hobble, number two, three to abstain. The bonuses are handpicked but... Lucy Hobbins, number two, three to abstain, the bonuses are handed over to the best. Thank you. Noel Nicholson, sixty-five, Luton Hobbie, Collins, fifty-two. Councillor Joel Nicholson is elected to the Vice Chair. Contact me on your one and one back to John Nicholson's name, please. I, the Deputy Vice Chair of the Council, have been elected to the office of Vice Chair and Councillor, declare that I take that office upon myself in duty and faithfully fulfil the duty, albeit according to the best of my judgement and ability. And congratulations to Pity and thank you to everyone this morning because it seemed like to come into this position, it is an honour and a privilege to serve Durham County Council, thank you. As of before, can I have a move for a second Chair, confirm the minutes of the meeting as of the twenty-third of August, twenty twenty-two, are the minutes agreed?
Chair, can I move for minutes?
Any second Chair?
Chair, can I second for minutes?
Are they agreed?
They're agreed.
item five, does any member declare any questions in relation to a matter of business on the agenda? Firstly, can I extend the word, and to Councillor Dorstschwender, who is the elected member of the West Ham Division. Secondly, the world already have noticed that we will be taking some photographs throughout the course of this morning's meeting, the council will hopefully take the council chambers at the conclusion of meetings and it will take five to ten minutes to organise, as always, your patience will be equally important. I want to take this opportunity to remind all councils of their obligation and record of conduct, I will kindly ask that you all proceed for that in a correct manner during our meetings and would also request that respect is shown from all sides of the event at all times. The House debate is part of the democratic process and please respect the use of bullets and do not point fingers during the debate, it's not appropriate. The chances for the casters across the board during the debate, you have my phone to allow very much people, so please use them as you see. I would also ask that now that you have established yourself, back in the council chambers here in County Hall, I would ask that all councils remain in the chamber at the end of the meeting in the sun, in the sun, while signing the Vice Chair in offices on the dimes to exit the council chamber. At the conclusion of all meetings, councils are then free to leave the chamber, however today, if you could remain, as we have the report, could all members, what they would receive as a spoil? Finally, I would like to say goodbye and many thanks to Dave with the Head of Transport and Contract Services who was leading the council on the twenty-seventh of May after thirty-seven years, and Rosalía Field and Practical Services Manager who leads on the twenty-first of June after thirty-nine years' service, this would be Ross's last council meeting. Alan Holbeath from two thousand and nine in his team, who in all know covered vast port of pilots, car parks, street facilities, parking permits or lorries disabled a few, feeling potter was were not in his room. Then in twenty-twenty, Dave took over from Adrian White into another role as Head for Transport and Contract Services. Our respect on living for bits is to be permitted, so I really do not know what you would do with all that spare time on your hands here, more time for hobby, cycling, being topside, I believe, do relax and enjoy your next thirty-seven years. As for Ross, sorry you are leaving, this being your last council meeting, think of what you want recently. Ross, our hope has been approachable, helpful, seem to be well-being goodness with advanced healthy families, and we are happy to rely on Ross's guidance, so I'm going to miss you in that new role. Ross, I thank you. Relax and enjoy them with your way brings and cycling around the country lanes at the county level. Could I invite any group leaders to pass comment on Dave and Ross, please?
Yeah, thanks Chair. And I'd like to wish both Dave and Ross a long and happy retirement and no offence to Dave, but Ross, you must have started when you were ten working here, if you've done thirty-nine years and you're ready to retire. So thank you for your service to the council, more importantly, thank you for your service to the people of County Durham and I'd like to wish you both a very long, happy and healthy retirement, enjoying what makes you happy.
Councillor Liz Madison.
Thank you Chair, yes, on behalf of the Conservative Group, I'd like to extend our thanks and appreciation to Dave and to Ross. I've worked with Ross obviously since I joined the council in two thousand and five and she's always patient and explicit, the intricacies of committee places and swapping them and all the rest of it, we'll come on to that later in the agenda. And Dave, I've seen more of them in the last year, what was levelling up and one thing and another than I have in a long, long time. Both immensely valuable officers, very sorry to see them go, but fully understand the time has come to do more enjoyable things than sitting here on a fine day morning. So thank you very much Chair.
Councillor Shaw, the way.
Yeah, thanks Chair. Well, I gave the council a name, name seven, quite a number, Ross, and you've always told me, that's a straight question, but a straight answer, maybe Ross can answer what it is, otherwise, straight away, straight away, I wish you all the well for your retirement. I think you might have a good job, I think, see you later, of course.
On there you go, and you can, oh, sorry.
Thank you Chair, and I've got to say that I was staggered, when Ross told us she was leaving after forty years, and I know she's good at maths, I said, no, you've got to be mum. And she had to assure me, when she started, as she'd put thirty-nine plus years in, and it came as somewhat a shock, so I'm very sorry that you are leaving, but you are taking the opportunity and that's only right, life as I've found out is precious and you need to determine the way forward for you in the future and good luck to you. And for Dave, I look forward to seeing Dave as I weigh past him when he's cycling in some of the safe lanes that we've been installing in County Durham, but I will be joining him on the state of him, I'll be driving, thank you so much Chair. Thank you.
Councillor Marshall.
Thanks Chair, I mean, I just want to say to Ross and to Dave, thanks so much for all these many, many years of loyal service you've put in for the council and also in particular to you, Ross, thanks for the friendship and the hard work you've put in with our group over many, many years, both members that are currently in the chamber and previous members as well that have asked us to pass on my well wishes to you. Today, I just want to say thanks for the support you've given to the council, in particular to me and my role as Cabinet Lead for Economic Regen over four years, many honest, quite frank discussions on various things from relief roads to cycle lanes to trains and buses and, you know, the really uncontentious stuff that the council looks at, you've had to navigate your way around some really, really hostile public meetings at times and you've always done so in a really dignified, knowledgeable and honest way, so I'd just like to wish you both the very best of luck for the future, thank you.
Councillor Liz Madison, please.
Wow, what a length of service, dedication and commitment to the county. Ross, you don't look old enough to retire. I would like to thank you on behalf of our group, for spending moments that were in attendance, for all the work you've done for us, it's been very helpful and it's been really appreciated, thank you very much and good luck from now on.
Could we all applaud this, please? Item seven, can I invite the League of the Council to hold their events, please?
Thank you Chair. With regards to Cabinet and Deputy Leader, the posts will remain unchanged from last year, Councillor Richard Bell will remain as Deputy Leader and the Cabinet will remain as they were, they will keep the same positions and in doing so, I'd like to thank each and every one of them, as well as my colleagues that behind me, for their assistance this year and look forward to working with them again next year.
Aunt May, can I ask the head of the department to present the report?
Thank you Chair. The annual review of the constitution report follows the same format as it has in previous years and we've taken the same approach in terms of review. We have updated the formatting to ensure that the constitution implies that the accessibility requirements of view online, it will look slightly different to how it had been in previous years. The report summarises the legislative basis for the constitution and proposed changes appear in the order in which they appear in the constitution. We take Article Four to all council firstly, in respect of area planning committees, these currently comprise sixteen members, eight representing the elected divisions within the county's area and eight others from across the county. This arrangement is considered to achieve a balance between local and strategic interment of it. However, when seats are allocated in accordance with political balance rules, giving effect to the allocation is difficult, though a group is entitled to a seat but doesn't have any local members. Officers were therefore requested to look at amendment in the arrangement to see that members are appointed on basis of political balance only, and this approach is a consistent with the approach taken by the council of other regulation committees as well as other political authorities. The report also proposes changes to the responsibilities of the Chief Officer Appointments Committee. Under the openness and accountability of local pay guidelines, council should have the opportunity to vote on large salary incentive packages before they are offered. A hundred thousand pounds is considered to be the threshold for member approval and this responsibility currently sits with all council. However, since the dates of council meetings are set annually, there can be a delay in such proposals being considered and that impacts on the ability of the council to implement important operational changes. It therefore proposed that council delegate that responsibility to the Chief Officer Appointments Committee. In proposing the change, it's important to note that meetings after Chief Officers Appointments Committee are subject to the same access to information rules as to council, agendas are published and press and public are related to a tendency to reject the rules of exemption and of course the committee is going to be balanced and importantly, members still get to vote on those packages that require greater flexibility when implementing restriction proposals. If the council approves the proposal, the changes set out in the two of the report will be based in reference to the creation of posts with salary in excess of a hundred thousand and the changes will be reflected in the next pay policy presented to the council. During the review, it was noticed that whilst there is provision for the equivalent leader following an election, there's no provision in respect of appointing a leader where the vacancy arises in the term. In practice, the equivalent would need to take place at the next meeting following the vacancy arising and therefore it's proposed to amend the constitution to reflect this. Article six is also silent on how newly dated appointments are believed to be removed by a motion on notice in accordance with the council procedure rules. This is governed by the Government Act nineteen seventy-two, which states that the legal leader will be elected either at the meeting at which they are at, the former leader is removed, or at a subsequent meeting. Again, it's proposed to update Article six to reflect the legislative position. There are some proposed amendments to the scheme of deputy delegation which relate to executive functions and may be approved by a cabinet meeting on the sixth of April. There are minor amendments proposed by the amendment to the council procedure rules to make provision for motions on notice to be sent to a designated inbox. And in respect of the executive procedure rules, paragraph fifty-eight sixty-one of the report sets out the proposed changes to the GPM on the Monday before the meeting to noon on Friday before the meeting, this ruling is in line with the deadline for the public. This brings it into line with the deadline for constitutionality. And again, it's proposed to include requests that questions submitted are submitted to a dedicated inbox as well as asking members to state in what capacity they are asking a question. The final proposals to mention are those in respect of the protocol on member officer relations, which was reviewed alongside the consular charter which previously established within the constitution. And it's proposed to amend the protocol so that it reflects all areas in the charter not already covered. Chair, the recommendations are set out in paragraph 4 of the report. The council should approve the proposed changes, letting it affect and request that I can leave the services published the amended document on the council first.
Can I have the movement?
Yep, Chair, thank you. The council's constitution sets out how the council operates, how decisions are made and the procedures which are followed to ensure that these are efficient, transparent and accountable to local people. Some of these processes are required by law, while others are a matter for the council to choose. It is good practice to ensure the constitution is regularly reviewed so that it remains fit for purpose and reflects good practice and any changes in legislation. The report summarizes the work that has been done throughout the year in reviewing all aspects of the constitution and the consultation that has taken place with the cross-party constitution working group in respect of appointments to area planning committees and the protocol on member officer relationship for approving the creation of posts with a salary and any severance packages above £100,000 to the chief officer appointments committee. This committee is already responsible for our more senior appointments. And as the head of legal and democratic services has explained, the council is required to have regard to statutory guidance which provides for such approvals to be the responsibility of council. As the report explains, the proposal to delegate this to the chief officer's appointment committee will mean that such proposals can be dealt with without delay, but still ensures that they are considered and approved by cross-parting members. Cabinet considered the proposals at its meeting on the 6th of April and approved the changes to the officer scheme of delegation in respect of executive functions. And in doing so, agreed to recommend to council that the proposed changes are approved to take immediate effect. I am therefore pleased to move the recommendations of paragraph 4 in the report.
In the centre.
Thank you, Chair. I echo councillor Hopgood's comments in relation to the importance of the constitution and the need to keep it under review. If members haven't read already, I would in particular draw their attention to appendix 9, the extract of the protocol on member officer relations, and section 8.4, ward members, which essentially sets out the rights and obligations of ward members. Put very simply, ward members should not receive any surprises about what's going on in their ward. They should know about what's going on. And I would ask councillors to read those sections. And I would also ask members of CMT to draw those sections to the attention of their teams so, again, members don't receive any surprises in their wards. With that, Chair, I am very happy to second the recommendations of the review.
Are there any questions on the report? Is there anyone who has a question? Does the council propose changes to the constitution and its publication outline?
Great.
Addendum 9, appointments of council bodies and allocations of seats of political groups in the section 15 of the local appointments and housing plans, 1989. Can I ask the head of legal and democratic services, Lieutenant Ford, please?
Thank you, Chair. The purpose of the report is to appoint committees to the corporate parenting power in accordance with the constitution and the determination of the allocation of seats among the seven political groups on the council. Paragraph 5 of the report sets out legislative requirements regarding political balance and principles to be followed when allocating seats. Appendix 2 of the report sets out proportionate distribution of seats by room. Appendix 3 sets out the allocation of seats across the separate groups. There's an amendment to the allocation of seats to the corporate, employee and scrutiny management board, appendix 3. In that the conservative group will go from five to four seats and the Durham dependent group will go from three to four. And on the children and children's scrutiny committee, the conservatives will go from four to five seats and the Durham dependent group will go from two to three, and three to two. This is a note that that change happens to be generally published. Appendix 4 sets out the composition of the health and wellbeing board and the recommendations are set out in paragraph 4A to F of the report.
Can I have the movement?
Yeah, Chair, can I move the report?
And the second, please.
Make up the report, Chair.
Thank you. Are there any questions on the report? Is there someone who has a question? Does the council break the regulations in the report?
Ready.
Ladies and gentlemen. Ladies and gentlemen, the appeal to complaints, committee twenty five, heading twelve fifty two, abstentions, devo, councilor Deane is appointed chair of the appeals and complaints committee. And I plead to remind members that you have access to regular speakers. Thank you. Appeals and complaints committee, can I add nominations for the quiet in the right chair please? Councilor.
Thank you, on behalf of the direct administration, I propose councillor Eric Mayden for the position of vice chair of the appeals and complaints committee.
Second please.
On behalf of the joint administration, I nominate councillor Deane and Deputy Lieutenant of the Department. Thank you.
Councilor Deane. Thank you Chair, I nominate councillor Christine Fletcher. Councillor Adcock, last stand.
Thank you Chair, I'm standing councillor Christine Fletcher.
You're up. Just wait, you guys next, you ladies next. Ladies and gentlemen, please, can I ask, not going to come yet, yes you please, it's a classic door check, you have please. Appeals and complaints committee, twenty five, heading twelve fifty two, abstentions, sorry. Thank you, I apologize for that, this is a pleasure, I am sorry. Abstentions, devo. Councillor Mayden is appointed, thank you. Orders committee, can I add nominations for the right chair please? Councillor Deane.
Thank you Chair. On behalf of the direct administration, I propose councillor Alex Watson for the position of chair of the board of commissioners.
Second please. Second Chair. Can I second councillor Watson please? Thank you, for the chair. Councillor Deane. Second Chair, I propose to the justice. Second please. Councillor Adcock, last stand.
Thank you Chair, I'm last second, I'm the justice then.
Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen. Alex Goodall. Orders committee, Chair, on behalf of sixty five, heading twelve fifty two, abstentions, devo. Councillor Watson. Orders committee, can I add nominations for the right chair please? Councillor Deane.
Thank you Chair. On behalf of the direct administration, I propose councillor Lewis, for the position of vice chair of the board of commissioners.
Second please. Second Chair, can I second councillor Lewis? Thank you. Any other nominations? Is there a nomination, can I be agreed please?
Agreed.
Chief officer of the right committee, can I have nominations for the right chair please? Councillor Deane.
I think I'll just go straight and celebrate, we now have talked to the Chinese official and go through this. On behalf of the direct administration, I propose councillor Anshakul for the position of vice chair.
Okay, you mean?
I want to use the chair, chief officer, I'll make the meeting.
Thank you. Councillor Deane, I'd like to ask that the honourable councillor, thank you. Councillor McKeon, I'd like to ask that the honourable councillor, councillor Tom Marshall for the right chair. Second please.
Thank you Chair, I'm last second, I'm off.
Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen. Chief officer of the right committee, Chair, on behalf of sixty five, heading twelve fifty two. Chief officer of the right committee, Chair, have nominations for the right chair please?
Thank you Chair, on behalf of the direct administration, I propose councillor Richard Bell for the vice chair.
Councillor Deane. Chair, I nominate councillor Lawrie. Second please.
Thank you Chair, I'm last second councillor Lawrie.
Ladies and gentlemen. Chief officer of the right committee, twenty five, heading twelve fifty four, heading twelve fifty three, councillor Bell is appointed. Highness committee, can I add nominations for the right chair please?
Thank you Chair, on behalf of the direct administration, I propose councillor Richard Bell for the position of chair of the highest committee.
Second please. Can I recommend, um, that you, um, chair. Councillor McKeon. Chair, I nominate councillor Charlie Kaye. Councillor Adcock, last stand.
Thank you Chair, second councillor, thank you.
Third second.
Uh, no, we're on the, uh, yeah. No, okay, all. Actually, Chair.
Ladies and gentlemen. Highness committee, Chair, councillor Richard Bell, sixty five, councillor Charlie Kaye, fifty two, councillor Oliver Lawrie. Highness committee, can I add nominations for the right chair please? Councillor Deane.
Thank you Chair, on behalf of the direct administration, I propose councillor Gary Richardson for the position of vice chair of the highest committee.
Councillor Gary. Thank you. Councillor McKeon. I nominate councillor David Bowles. Councillor Adam Adcock, last stand.
Thank you Chair, I'm last second councillor David Bowles.
Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen.
This is automatic, is it? Oh, we need to.
Ladies and gentlemen. Highness committee, right chair, councillor sixty five, councillor Lee, probably fifty two, councillor Peterson, please. Secretary Cherry, licensing, licensing committee, can I add nominations for the right chair please?
Thank you Chair, on behalf of the direct administration, I propose councillor David Brown for the position of. On behalf of the direct administration, I propose councillor David Brown for the position of chair of the statutory licensing committee.
Councillor Brown. I second. Michael. Councillor McKeon. Councillor Adcock, last stand. Councillor Adcock, last stand.
I'm last second councillor Martin.
Ladies and gentlemen. Statutory licensing committee, Chair, David Brown, sixty five. Marion Wilson, fifty two, councillor Brown is appointed, thank you. Statutory licensing committee, can I add nominations for the right chair please?
Thank you Chair, on behalf of the direct administration, I propose councillor Liz Brown for the position of vice chair of the statutory licensing committee.
Councillor Deane, councillor Brown, second last. Thank you. Councillor McKeon. I propose councillor Emma Wardlock. Councillor Adcock, last stand.
Second councillor, last.
Statutory housing committee, twenty five, head of state, councillor Liz, sixty five, councillor Bennett, one lock, fifty two, councillor Brown. Secretary licensing committee, can I have nominations for the appointment of the second vice chair please? Council Robert.
Thank you Chair, on behalf of the Jack administration, I propose Council John Blakey for the position of second vice chair of the statutory licensing committee.
Thank you. Council McKeon. Vice Counsel, Council Paul Hutton. Council Adam Cock, Austin.
My second, Council Austin.
Close in the vote. Secretary licensing committee, can I have nominations for the vice chair, Council Lewis sixty-five, Council Carol Hampton fifty-two. Secretary licensing committee, can I have nominations for the appointment of the first chair in the committee?
Thank you Chair, on behalf of the Jack administration, I propose Council David Brown for the position of first chair of the statutory licensing committee.
Thank you. Council Robert. Council McKeon. General Counsel, Council Mary Wilson. Council Adam Cock, Austin.
My second, Council Mary Wilson.
Secretary licensing committee, Vice Chair, David Brown sixty-five. Mary Wilson fifty-two, Council Brown is appointed. Secretary licensing committee, can I have nominations for the appointment of the second chair, please, Council Robert.
Thank you Chair, on behalf of the Jack administration, I propose Council David Brown for the position of second chair of the statutory licensing committee.
Council Robert. My second, Council David. Council McKeon. Thank you, and I'm the Vice Counsel. Council Adam Cock, Austin.
My second, Council Austin.
Thank you. There's still a number of candidates to go, so just to remind you that the vote is open, make sure you have all your votes. Close in the vote. Secretary licensing committee, second chair, Vice Chair, David Brown sixty-five, Council Curtis fifty-two. Council Brown is appointed. Secretary licensing committee, can I have nominations for the appointment of the third chair please? Council Robert.
Thank you Chair, on behalf of the Jack administration, I propose Council John Blakey for the position of third chair of statutory licensing committee.
Council Robert. Thank you. Council McKeon. Vice Counsel, Council Emma Wardock. Council Adam Cock, Austin.
My second, Council Wardock.
Thank you. Close in the vote. Secretary licensing committee, third chair, Council Dan sixty-five, Council Emma Wardock fifty-two, Council David is appointed. General licensing and registration committee, can I have nominations for the appointment of the chair please? Council Robert.
General licensing committee, can I have nominations for the appointment of the chair please?
Council Robert. Thank you. Council McKeon. Vice Counsel, General Counsel, Council Paul Hutton. Council Adam Cock, Austin.
My second, Council Hutton.
Thank you. Close in the vote. General licensing and registration committee, Vice Chair, Council David Thorpe sixty-five, Council Curtis Mahoney fifty-two. Council David Thorpe is appointed. General licensing and registration committee, can I have nominations for the appointment of the vice chair please?
Thank you Chair, on behalf of the Jack administration, I propose Council Adam Cock for the position of vice chair of the general licensing and registration committee.
Council Robert. Council McKeon. General Counsel, Council Paul Hutton. Council Adam Cock, Austin.
My second, Council Hutton.
Thank you. Close in the vote. General licensing and registration committee, Vice Chair, Council Lewis sixty-five, Council Curtis fifty-two. Council Mary Wilson fifty-two. General licensing and registration committee, can I have nominations for the appointment of the first chair please? Council Robert.
Thank you Chair, on behalf of the Jack administration, I propose Council David Brown for the position of first chair of the general licensing and registration committee.
Council Robert. Council McKeon. General Counsel, Council Paul Hutton. Council Adam Cock, Austin.
My second, Council Hutton.
Thank you. Thank you. Close in votes. General Licensing and Registration Committee, can I have nominations to the appointment of the vice chair? Close in votes. Councillor Brown. General Licensing and Registration Committee, can I have nominations to the appointment of the vice chair?
Chair, Chair, I must say, please, um, councillor, one of the councillors on the other side left the room, applied to the vote, but the votes are still the same, how is that possible?
I'll tell you why, because look, I said to someone else. Huh?
The handset, we've got sixty-five votes, fifty-two votes in.
Does the councillor not have to be in the chamber to vote? This chamber, here, now? Right, well, that, that councillor, councillor Townsend left the room before the vote was opened. So I, councillor Townsend, I believe, left the room before the vote was opened.
What's the reason? He's in the little building?
Oh yes, exactly, uh, some people are, I mean, it's thirty, they're going to have to stand up, uh, and then people will notice, after the stand-up, uh, the decision will answer the meeting, so some people might have to go, uh, to the, to the, in things like that, so then maybe it's a bit cold sensitive, I think.
Uh, sorry, we're not disputing that anyone has to leave the room, that's perfectly acceptable, but you can't cast a vote in a room if you're not in it? Is the question? Yes, and I think we're gonna have a comfort break shortly, which, that isn't the point here, the point is, that a vote has been cast in this room by somebody who's not present.
For clarity, clarity, people do need to be in the room to pass their vote, if they pass their vote and they left the room, then that's not, they need to be in the room to pass their vote, but in this instance, it makes no difference to be out or not vote, so it's not a difference, with the vote being confirmed by it.
Somebody over there has bought them for us. Terrible.
Absolutely shocked. Excuse me councillor, I'm sorry, I can't remember, did I read out Councillor Brown sixty-five, and first the hard fifty-two, please. And so councillor David Brown is appointed. Councillor Wood.
Thank you Chair, on behalf of the Director of Administration, I propose Councillor John Lee to the position of second chair of the General Licensing and Registration Committee.
Councillor Brown. Councillor McKeon. Our honourable councillor George Murray. Councillor Akbar Foster.
We shall have our second councillor Wardock.
And here. Close in votes. Ladies and gentlemen, I can pass your votes, please. General Licensing and Registration Committee.
Chair, on behalf of the President, please.
Yes.
Uh, I have actually pressed on the queue, I think the matter that was raised before needs resolving. Um, the head of legal has explained, but clearly there are concerns from this side, that a councillor left the room, and that vote was registered, we don't believe the handset was taken out either, and we'd like an explanation why, irrespective of the result, it's about codes of conduct and transparency.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm not sure, can't chair, I think, I think the person who pressed the button, sorry, could I, could I finish, sorry, Helen, the person who pressed the button, either on that person's behalf, should not be voting in this chair at the day.
Chair, I would ask for the advice, and I'd give the advice at the time, I mean, you need to play them, that members need to be in the room to vote, pass their vote, they have to be in the room, and have to pass it down. The actual outcome of that vote makes no difference whether that vote's counted or not, we move on, there are always issues in relation to the code of conduct, they need to be picked apart by this meeting, and we can't, we can't remove the code of conduct, we really have to change it.
And you can't, you can't make acquisitions or statements that hasn't been proven or backed up.
That's all right, of course.
I think you're on strictly the theme of grounds.
General Licensing and Registration Committee, can I have nominations to the appointment of the third chair?
Thank you Chair, on behalf of the Director of Administration, I propose Councillor John Lee to the position of third chair of the General Licensing and Registration Committee.
Councillor Brown. Councillor McKeon. Number eight councillor George Murray. Councillor Akbar Foster.
We shall have our second councillor Wardock.
And here. Members, please, technically, I would consider the standards to be more fair and balanced, please. Close in votes. Standing to the right, Social Committee, Chair, Councillor James sixty-five, first the hard fifty-two, Councillor Lee is appointed. Standards Committee, can I have nominations to the appointment of the third chair?
Thank you Chair, on behalf of the Director of Administration, I propose Councillor John Williamson to the position of chair of the Standard Committee.
Councillor Brown. Councillor McKeon. Councillor Akbar Foster.
We shall have our second councillor Wardock.
Close in votes.
Thank you Chair. Could I just have some clarity on whether the vice chair, the councillor, have the old position? I'm not very clear about that, because making a vote is a bad thing. You can get lost.
Close in votes. Standards Committee, Chair, Normie Dawson sixty-five, Isabella Lobbet fifty-two, Councillor Williamson is appointed. Standards Committee, can I have nominations to the appointment of the third chair? Councillor Wood.
Thank you Chair, on behalf of the Director of Administration, I propose Councillor Liz Marson to the position of vice chair of the Standard Committee.
I prefer the councillor, okay, and here's my, and here's the councillor. Councillor McKeon. Number eight councillor George Murray. Councillor Akbar Foster.
We shall have our second councillor Wardock.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Closing vote. Standards Committee Chair, it's last sixty-five, President fifty-two, Councilor McKeon. Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, I'd like to appoint the chair of the County Plan for this.
Councilor Ian, would you like to nominate Castle Woodson? Councilor Adam Cawthorn?
I second Castle Woodson.
Thank you. County planning committee chair, Councilor George Richardson, 65; Councilor Helen Norton, 52; Councilor Richard Thompson, 50. County planning committee chair, have nominations to appoint, the vice-chair, please.
Ladies and gentlemen, from your office at the administration, I'd like to appoint the chair of the County Plan for this.
Councilor Ian, would you like to nominate Castle Woodson? Councilor Adam Cawthorn?
I second Castle Woodson.
Ladies and gentlemen. Close in vote. County planning committee chair, Alan Bell, 65; Councilor Russell, 52; Councilor Bell is appointed. County planning committee chief, can I have nominations to appoint into the chair? Councilor Woodson?
Ladies and gentlemen, from your office at the administration, I'd like to appoint the chair of the area planning committee, Chief.
I second Castle Woodson. Councilor Ian, would you like to nominate Castle Woodson? Councilor Adam Cawthorn?
I second Castle Woodson.
Thank you. Close in vote. County planning committee chief, Chair Matt Johnson, 65; Councilor Woodson, 52; Councilor McGolden is appointed. County planning committee chief, can I have nominations to appoint into the vice-chair, please?
Ladies and gentlemen, from your office at the administration, I'd like to appoint the chair of the area planning committee, Chief.
Thank you. Councilor McGolden, I second Castle Woodson. Councilor Ian, would you like to nominate Castle Woodson? Councilor Adam Cawthorn?
I second Castle Woodson.
Thank you. Close in vote. Close in vote. County planning committee chief, Vice-chair, Watson, 65; Councilor Woodson, 52; Councilor Stanley Woodson, 52. County planning committee chairman, please, can I have nominations to appoint into the chair, please?
Ladies and gentlemen, from your office at the administration, I'd like to appoint the chair of the area planning committee, Chief.
Councilor McGolden, I second Castle Woodson. Councilor Ian, would you like to nominate Castle Woodson? Councilor Adam Cawthorn?
I second Castle Woodson.
Thank you. Close in vote. County planning committee chairman, please, Chair James, 65; Councilor Russell, 70; Councilor Woodson, 52; Councilor Ian is appointed. County planning committee chairman, please, can I have nominations to appoint into the vice-chair, please?
Ladies and gentlemen, from your office at the administration, I'd like to appoint the chair of the area planning committee, Chief.
I second Castle Woodson. Councilor Ian, would you like to nominate Castle Woodson? Councilor Adam Cawthorn?
I second Castle Woodson.
Close in vote. Close in vote. County planning committee chairman, Vice-chair, Your Call, 65; Mr. Denny, 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 because Councilor Woodson is appointed. County planning committee chairman, please, can I have nominations to appoint into the chair, please?
Ladies and gentlemen, from your office at the administration, I'd like to appoint the chair of the area planning committee, Chief.
Councilor Ian, nominate Councilor Ian Woodson. Councilor Adam Cawthorn?
I second Castle Woodson.
Thank you. Close in vote. Close in vote. County planning committee chairman, Vice-chair, George Richardson, 65; Councilor Duncan, 52; Councilor Richard Thompson, 50. County planning committee chairman, can I have nominations to appoint into the vice-chair, please? Councilor Ian, would you like to nominate Castle Woodson? Councilor Adam Cawthorn?
I second Castle Woodson.
Thank you. There's still a few members to vote on this one, can you take it, you pass the vote, please?
Right hand.
County planning committee chairman, Vice-chair, Alan Fair, 65; Councilor Seri, 65; Councilor Woodson, 52; Councilor Seri is appointed. County planning committee, can I have nominations to appoint into the chair, please?
Ladies and gentlemen, from your office at the administration, I'd like to appoint the chair of the area planning committee, Chief.
Councilor McGolden, I'd like to appoint the chair of the area planning committee. Councilor Ian, would you like to nominate Castle Woodson? Councilor Adam Cawthorn?
I second Castle Woodson. Please, I'll second Councilor McKeon.
Thank you. Then there's still a few people that have to vote, can you check that you have passed the vote, please? Closing vote. Councilor Duncan, can I have nominations, will you appoint them to the Vice Chair, please?
The Chair, on behalf of the Director of Administration, I'd like to propose Councilor Laura May for the position of Chair. The Chair, on behalf of the Director of Administration, I'd like to propose Councilor Laura May for the position of Chair.
Thank you. Councilor McKeon? Nominate Councilor John Hattie. Councilor Applefoster?
Please, I'll second Councilor McKeon.
Thank you. Councilor McKeon? Nominate Councilor John Hattie. Councilor Applefoster?
Please, I'll second Councilor McKeon.
Thank you. The members, please, just still protect their privacy instead of keeping us past our rights. Councilor Duncan, can I have nominations, will you appoint them to the Chair, please? Call for the Chair, can I have nominations, will you appoint them to the Chair, please? Councilor Wood?
The Chair, on behalf of the Director of Administration, I'd like to propose Councilor May for the position of Chair, or the call for the Chair.
Councilor Jodling? I second your nomination. Councilor McKeon? Nominate Councilor Chris Hardy. Councilor Applefoster?
Please, I'll second Councilor McKeon.
Thank you. Closing vote. Call for the Chair, can I have nominations, will you appoint them to the Vice Chair, please? Call for the Chair, can I have nominations, will you appoint them to the Vice Chair, please?
The Chair, on behalf of the Director of Administration, I'd like to propose Councilor Sharon Walton for the position of Vice Chair, or the call for the Chair.
Councilor Jodling? Councilor McKeon? Nominate Councilor Jacob Miller. Councilor Applefoster?
Please, I'll second Councilor McKeon.
Thank you. Closing vote. The members, check the answers, please. Closing vote. Call for the Chair, Sharon Walton 65, eight minutes fifty-two, Councilor Lawrence is appointed, thank you. Call for the Chair, can I have nominations, will you appoint them to the Chair, please? Councilor Wood?
The Chair, on behalf of the Director of Administration, I'd like to propose Councilor Craig Martin for the position of Chair, or the call for the Chair.
Councilor Jodling? I second your nomination. Councilor McKeon? Nominate Councilor Ross Murray. Councilor Applefoster?
Please, I'll second Councilor Ross Murray.
Thank you. Call for the Chair, can I have nominations, will you appoint them to the Vice Chair, please? Call for the Chair, can I have nominations, will you appoint them to the Vice Chair, please? Councilor Wood?
The Chair, on behalf of the Director of Administration, I'd like to propose Councilor Chris Lyons for the position of Vice Chair, or the call for the Chair.
Councilor Jodling? I second your nomination, Chris Lyons. Thank you. Councilor McKeon? I'd like to nominate Councilor Alison Bate. Councilor Applefoster?
Please, I'll second Councilor McKeon.
Thank you. The members, check the answers, please. Closing vote. Call for the Chair, can I have nominations, will you appoint them to the Vice Chair, please? Councilor Lyons 65, Alison Bate, 52, Chris Lyons is appointed. The members, please, can I have nominations, will you appoint them to the Chair, please?
On behalf of the Director of Administration, I'd like to propose Councilor Chris Wood, for the position of Chair.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilor Wood. Councilor McKeon? Nominate Councilor Oliver Bell. Councilor Applefoster?
Please, I'll second Councilor McKeon.
Thank you. Closing vote. The members, please, can I have nominations, will you appoint them to the Vice Chair, please? The members, please, can I have nominations, will you appoint them to the Vice Chair, please? Councilor Wood?
On behalf of the Director of Administration, I'd like to propose Councilor Jodling for the position of Vice Chair.
Thank you, Councilor McKeon. Councilor Jodling? I second your nomination, Councilor McKeon. Thank you. Councilor McKeon? Nominate Councilor Chris Hardy. Councilor Applefoster?
Please, I'll second Councilor McKeon.
Thank you very much. For the National Youth Committee Committee, Vice Chair, Chris Lyons, sixty-five, of Crickfield, two, Counselor Lyons. Thank you, Counselor McKeon. For the National Youth Committee Committee, can I have nominations for the appointment to the Vice Chair, please?
Thank you, Chair. On behalf of the General Administration, I would like to propose Counselor George Chalmers, for the position of Chair of the City of London, for the City of London Community Schools.
Thank you, Counselor Dobbin. I'd like to nominate Counselor George Chalmers. Thank you. Counselor McKeon, I'd like to nominate Counselor Richard Manchester. Counselor Akbar Fosse.
I'd like to nominate Counselor Allison Beckett.
Thank you, Counselor McKeon. Closing the vote. The members who have answered, please. The members who have answered, please. Closing the vote. For the National Youth Committee Committee, Vice Chair, Chris Lyons, sixty-four, of Crickfield, two, Counselor Hethside is appointed. Thank you. Environment and Sustainability Committee, can I have nominations for the appointment to the Vice Chair, please?
Thank you, Chair. On behalf of the General Administration, I would like to propose Counselor Beth Coles, for the position of Chair of the Environment and Sustainability Committee.
Counselor Dobbin, I'd like to nominate Counselor George Chalmers. Counselor McKeon, I'd like to nominate Counselor Richard Manchester. Counselor Akbar Fosse.
I'd like to nominate Counselor Allison Beckett.
Thank you, Counselor McKeon. Closing the vote. Environment and Sustainability Committee, Vice Chair, Chris Lyons, sixty-four, of Crickfield, two, Counselor Lyons. Thank you. Environment and Sustainability Committee, can I have nominations for the appointment to the Vice Chair, please?
Thank you, Chair. On behalf of the General Administration, I would like to propose Counselor George Chalmers, for the position of Vice Chair, of the Environment and Sustainability Committee.
Thank you. Counselor Dobbin, I'd like to nominate Counselor George Chalmers. Counselor McKeon, nominations. Are they agreed?
Agreed.
Counselor Early is appointed. Economy and Enterprise Committee, can I have nominations for the appointment to the Vice Chair, please?
Thank you, Chair. On behalf of the General Administration, I would like to propose Counselor Bill Box, for the position of Chair of the Economy and Enterprise School in Lincoln.
Thank you. Counselor Dobbin, I'd like to nominate Counselor George Chalmers. Counselor McKeon, nominate Counselor Richard Manchester. Counselor Akbar Fosse.
I'd like to nominate Counselor Richard Manchester.
Thank you very much. The members who have answered, please. Closing the vote. Economy and Enterprise Committee, Vice Chair, Chris Lyons, sixty-four, Richard Manchester, fifty-one, Counselor Hethside is appointed. Economy and Enterprise Committee, can I have nominations for the appointment to the Vice Chair, please?
Thank you, Chair. On behalf of the General Administration, I would like to propose Counselor Anthony Jackson, for the position of Vice Chair of the Economy and Enterprise School in Lincoln.
Thank you. Counselor Dobbin, I'd like to nominate Counselor George Chalmers. Thank you. Counselor McKeon, I'd like to nominate Counselor Karl Marshall. Counselor Akbar Fosse.
I'd like to nominate Counselor Karl Marshall.
Thank you very much. Closing the vote. Economy and Enterprise Committee, Vice Chair, Chris Lyons, sixty-three, Karl Marshall, fifty-one, Counselor Jackson is appointed. Thank you. The adults and working children's committee, can I have nominations for the appointment to the Vice Chair, please?
On behalf of the General Administration, I would like to propose Counselor George Chalmers, for the position of Chair of the City of London, for the City of London Community Schools.
Thank you, Counselor McKeon. Is that in the place?
I'd like to nominate Counselor Allison Beckett. On behalf of the General Administration, I'd like to nominate Counselor George Chalmers, for the position of Chair of the Akbar Dobbin School.
Thank you, Counselor McKeon. Counselor McKeon, nominate Counselor Roy Handley. Counselor Akbar Fosse.
I'd like to nominate Counselor George Chalmers.
Thank you very much. Closing the vote. The members who have answered, please. Closing the vote. Adults and working children's committee, Vice Chair, Counselor Michael Dobbin, sixty-three, Counselor Veronica Handley, fifty-one, Counselor Dobbin is appointed. Adults and working children's committee, can I have nominations for the appointment to the Vice Chair, please?
On behalf of the General Administration, I would propose Counselor John Williams, for the position of Vice Chair of the City of London, for the City of London Community Schools.
Thank you, Counselor McKeon. Can I have a second, please?
On behalf of the General Administration, I would like to propose Counselor John Williams, for the position of Vice Chair of the City of London, for the City of London Community Schools.
Thank you, Counselor Roy. Counselor McKeon, I nominate Counselor Richard Chalmers. Counselor Akbar Fosse.
I'd like to nominate Counselor Allison Beckett.
Thank you very much. Closing the vote. The members who have answered, please. Adults and working children's committee, Vice Chair, Chris Lyons, sixty-three, Rochelle Hardman, fifty-one, Counselor Hay is appointed. Thank you. Thank you, Counselor McKeon, without a thank you. As to the eleven appointments to Blackberry and the bodies for twenty-two to twenty-three, then I ask the head of legal and democratic service to present the report.
Thank you, Chair. The purpose of this report is for Council to agree the appointments to joint bodies and local bodies to which the Council are advising to nominate representatives. Details and criteria for nominating to bodies are set out in paragraph four to the report, but in summary, in respect to the Council during the dialing by our best legal authority on the police and crime handle, Council is asked to agree the allegations to these should be calculated in accordance with the balance rule. In respect to the charter trust, the details are set out in appendix three. Appointments are drawn from members representing electoral areas wholly or partially within the form during a city roundtable. In addition, the Council has principal authority may appoint three additional trustees representing the wider area. Last year, Council chose not to appoint those positions. With regard to the joint audit committee, since two thousand and thirteen, the Council has nine members representative to serve on the joint audit committee to assist the police crime victims commissioner and the chief constable, historically to chair of the secret of the Historically, the chair of the county council's audit committee has been appointed to this position. With regard to the northeastern boundary authority and the north-ontide joint, the north-ontide boundary authority joint transport committees, its usual practice, the council will be at this meeting and appoint to those. However, we're still to receive specific requirements from the executive terror act, and therefore, the report seeks to delegate the authority to meet to agree those appointments in consultation with the relevant group leaders. With regard to the business district advisory board, council agreed to issue it in the municipal year two thousand and twenty-one, twenty-two at the meeting concluded on fourteen July, and the details are set out in the report. It requires that these re-compositions may extend from twenty-two to twenty-three. Chair, the report also seeks to delegate the authority to meet to agree nominations to other bodies as referred to in paragraph eight, which the council invited to nominate to, and the recommendations are set out in paragraph three, eight to eight in the report. Now, the series of recommendations are detailed in the report, and I ask the lead of the council to move paragraph three A to D and F to H detailed in the report.
Thanks, Chair. I move the recommendations are set out in paragraph three A to D and F to H of the report. In respect of recommendation three C, the head of legal and democratic services has outlined that the council may appoint three additional trustees to the charter trust as set out in paragraph four to appendix three. The report notes that we did not appoint to these additional positions last year, and in moving the recommendation, I do not propose that the council appoints to these positions this year. Thank you.
Can I have a second, please?
Second the recommendations, Chair.
Can I ask the council if there are any questions? Counselor Martin.
Thanks, Chair. It's a plea really that there's a lot of outside bodies on here, some of which are really, really important to the work of the council and our communities, housing group settings and advice bureaus and things like that. Now, I know some of these do have their own selection processes and interview processes when the council makes nominations. But what I'd ask is that when this council puts forward a nomination of those bodies, that those members put forward, do engage in that process, it's really important that we have links to our partners, especially with things like the cost of living crisis hitting really hard. Thanks, Chair.
Can I ask the council to read the recommendations?
Agreed.
Can I ask the lead to move paragraph three E detailed in the report?
Yeah, thanks, Chair. I move recommendation three E and nominate councillor Alex Watson as chair of the county council's audit committee to that position.
Can I have a second, please, for the recommendation regarding the lead of the council?
Second the recommendation, Chair.
Can I ask you, the council if there are any questions? Can I ask the council to read the recommendations?
Agreed.
I would transfer it into the returning officer. The report is informed information only. Out of the thirteen council meetings, can I ask the council to read the specific dates of the council meetings of two thousand and twenty-two, twenty-three as printed on the agenda?
Agreed.